Seven o'clock. We will start with pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stephanie Sinson's in front of you. Do you mind calling Commissioner Seguin? Do you mind calling the role?
Sure. Brian Chena.
Here.
Liz Curry.
Here.
Hal Dodson.
Here.
Kevin Garrison.
Here.
Charlie Janoni.
Here.
Patrick Holliday.
Here.
David Kurt.
Yeah.
Pat Kleiman.
Here.
Alan Matson.
Here.
Mark Porter.
Here.
Stephanie Seguina is here.
Scott Shubsky.
Here.
Miriam Stoll.
Ben Truman.
Here.
Xander Wong.
He's not here.
Georgia Essig.
She's not here either. Both had commitments or one had a commitment and one had an illness, so. The Board wishes to recognize, welcome, and thank those who are providing language interpretation of Board proceedings. The Board's commitment that all children receive equitable academic services must ensure that new American parents are welcome and can attend meetings, understand the process, and be actively engaged. Interpretation of proceedings honors, respects, and values our new American parents and students. The Board asks the public and media to respect and understand the importance of this interpretation. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Matson, seconded by Commissioner Stoll. Any amendments to the agenda? Commissioner Seguina.
Yes, I want that we schedule time served at 8:30 for the executive session.
We have a second for time. Commissioner Curry. Any further amendments? Okay, all in favor of the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. At this time, the Board welcomes comments and questions from the public, including staff and students. We encourage you to express your opinions on matters concerning any subject related to public education in general and the operations of the Burlington School District in particular. The Board is very interested in the opinions expressed during this public comment period. However, this is not the time to engage members of the Board in conversation or debate. Commissioner, I guess that's Commissioner Kirk, you're closest. Do you mind grabbing the, do you just read the first three folks or so for?
Helen Hosley.
Hosley.
Hosley, okay. It's still you.
And who's after, who's after Helen?
Martha.
My name is Helen Hosley. I live in Ward 7. I have two public comments this evening. In regards to the superintendent search, the superintendent search is the single most important position within the school district, and as such, the process in which a qualified superintendent is found is vital and the established processes must be followed. This Board's track record for not following procedures and processes is alarming. I cite the following examples. This Board did not follow established protocols for reviewing the former superintendent, instead chose to fire the superintendent and buy out her contract. The Board disregarded an established process for the selection of a VHS Assistant Principal position. One candidate rose to the top in two separate processes over a four-year period, yet the Board ignored the recommendation, did not hire the top candidate, and then selected a person without any public process at all. The Superintendent Selection Committee met on September 2nd, I believe it's the ad hoc committee, to review the applications for the Superintendent Search Advisory Committee, SAC, which is really a horrible acronym. In that meeting, the committee's chair stated, and I quote, "Just because an applicant would score high in their list of criteria did not mean that that applicant would be selected for the committee." The chairman's comment raises serious concerns about whether or not the selection process is following the rules and whether it is appropriately transparent. As a result, the people selected are not representative of the important stakeholders in the process. Given its record, it's entirely possible that the final superintendent candidates would be a product of something other than the public process. Second, and completely off topic, I find it absurd that members of the school commissioner body would entertain a motion for an apology to the three men who were cited in the sexual harassment investigation. It's an example of wasting the district's time and resources for demanding an apology for following due process as it was the district's legal obligation to investigate. Because it wasn't a chargeable offense does not mean it did not happen. That's all I have this evening, and this is for the record.
Thank you. Martha.
My name is Martha Lang, and I live on Colchester Avenue, and I'm asking you to postpone your vote on the MOU for the TAF school lease. It's my understanding that it only popped up on the school board docs about 11 o'clock this morning, so I don't know if any of you have even had a chance to review it. If it is a done deal, it's a done deal, but I had nothing to do with it. Where are we ever going to get $1.6 million to replace that building? When it's gone, it's gone. And what assurance do you have that that $1.6 million isn't going to disappear as it, so much money in the Burlington School District has? It's general knowledge that TAF school needs repairs. Then why are we spending maintenance money on buildings, to buy buildings when we need maintenance work done on TAF? You people had nothing to do with the TAF school lease. You should be thankful. If you vote on the MOU tonight without postponing it and examining it, it will be knowledge. Just postpone it. Talk about it. Is it what you really want to do? Thank you very much. And I must tell you, I know how hard the New School Board is working. I just listen and I see, and people really, in Burlington, appreciate it. I don't know if you get feedback, but people really do appreciate your hard work. Thank you very, very much, all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Martha. Is there anyone further on? Is there anyone else that would like to?
(noise)
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you please sign in? Anyone further from the community for a public comment? Hearing none, we will move forward to, we have two parts of a board report here today, two special presentations. The first is Universal Design and Learning, and we have Judy Chalmers and Bobby Riley, and I'm not sure who else we have here.
Did I skip over?
I'm sorry. Hold on. Did you care to make a reflection, Scott? If anyone would like to make a brief reflection on public comment, please do so.
I just wanted to raise an issue, which is originally when we set it into motion, I think the Board's familiar that I'm not too happy with the situation with our interaction with the staff. I understand that for individual Board members to give direction to the staff of the district, that's not appropriate, because we would have 14 different directions. But for informational requests, I would prefer to adopt a style like city government has, is that I do think the City Council has that right, which is, as an elected member, if you have an informational question, it's fair to ask the staffer a question and get a response. The rest of the Board disagreed, and we set up a system that the staff requested, and we went with that. So I had a question, which I followed the process. I went through Miriam Stoll, that went on to Paul Irish, and it was 49 days ago. So this system that was set up for me to get the answers to my questions is now, I followed your process, and it's been 49 days. And after, I don't know what it was, two weeks, I asked Miriam, and she had gotten no response, not even an acknowledgement of her request. I had to, I was here at the building, so I asked Paul face-on. I said, can you acknowledge you received the request, because I wasn't even sure he had received it. Now, it was now about 35 days ago, and it had to do with the SOAR program and busing costs. And there was a rumor in the community about we were overspending by $25,000. So ironically, as I was trying to do something to help the district's image, because people are talking about how much we're overspending, so I'd like to know the facts. You know, what was, how much money was spent? Was it overspent? You know, what were we doing to offset it? No, this is not true. Let's get the facts out into the community, right? It's about transparency. But I'm coming to you now, because I will have a motion in the December meeting to actually get the information about the SOAR program in the summer. I followed the rules that you guys asked me to. It's been 49 days, and I haven't gotten an answer. That's unacceptable to me. I'm not giving direction to the district. I simply asked an informational question on did, how much money was budgeted for the SOAR program? Did we go over the budget? So it's been 49 days, and when we meet again in November, it'll be 79 days, and I will ask you to support the motion then. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shubsky. Any quick Board reflection? All right, hearing none. Judy? Bobby?
I think we're going to move over here, because we have a presentation this way. Thank you so much for inviting us. So, just a little bit more. I'm Judy Chalmers. I'm director of a nonprofit, VSA Vermont, which uses the magic of the arts to engage the capabilities and enhance the confidence of children and adults with disabilities. And I'm here with Bobby Riley, Judy Kleiman, and Gavin Wallace to talk about a partnership that began as an exploration of how can arts organizations better support schools, teachers, and students? And from the point of view of universal design for learning, how can we match the district's and the public schools' commitment to be, for inclusive teaching? So we're going to start with a one-minute version of a five-minute video, and I can make the full video available to you if you're interested in seeing more, and then we'll talk a little bit more.
And the amount of ownership and engagement that the children have, and that's all I needed. By being involved in this, we were sort of contributing to the vibrancy of the arts community, not only a movement in the state of Vermont, this collaborative process that we've created. I think we're changing the way that we look at arts in the state of Vermont.
One of the best parts about having a resident artist or a teaching artist in the school is precisely the fact that they are different from the classroom teacher. They have an expertise that the teacher doesn't have, and they're basically coming in specifically and only to collaborate with that classroom teacher around the curriculum that the teacher would like more help with, to help the students access that learning.
This isn't what the Integrated Arts Academy does. It's what magnet schools do, which is foster good partnerships that ultimately help kids. We're at that next stage of how can we take what we're doing and starting to spread that out. So it's not just anymore about the Integrated Arts Academy.
What does that collaboration mean? How do we make it the best that we possibly can?
It's just been a wonderful collaboration. I really feel a shift has happened in the last year or two, where art organizations are working together, schools are working with art organizations. It's a real team effort. Really, it's a delight for the children, and artists who are deputies of delight into schools.
I think it really serves for a model for the arts and for other nonprofit organizations to work together in this kind of collective environment. I think it's really, really good.
So that's a little taste of the partnership that began with VSA and Burlington City Arts at the Integrated Arts Academy, and then expanded to the Flynn Center and to the Vermont Arts Council. We now work with St. Michael's College. We're going to be working with the Vermont Youth Orchestra. What we actually do right now is present a three-credit graduate-level course for community-based teaching artists. So by the end of this year, this will be our second year doing that, there will be at least 20 teaching artists that are able to understand what classroom management is and use this theory of universal design for learning in combination of the arts. So very briefly, universal design is something that grew out of architecture, just as you know, that curb cuts, that began as an idea for people using wheelchairs, improves all of our lives with our suitcases and our strollers. The same thing is true of inclusive teaching and learning environments. The environments that are good for students with disabilities are good for all students. And now we have enough brain research that we know that there are three key neural networks that are engaged through this process of learning, of universal design for learning, and the arts are a fabulous match, because they are varied enough in how they're enacted to match those neural networks. So this group is now looking for, how can we bring what we've started with this course and the artist residence that we've had at the Integrated Arts Academy further out? How can we bring it to the rest of the district? How can we bring it even further than that? So with that, I think I'm going to let Gavin talk a little bit. Gavin studied universal design for learning through this partnership and has been able to use it in his class.
Thank you. I teach third grade down at the Integrated Arts Academy, and apologies for Sawyer James, who's voicing his opinion out in the hallway. He's been removed. I wanted to say that, as an educator, I feel like we are living in fascinating times right now. We are living in sort of unprecedented times, where the learning needs that I experience within my classroom are extremely diverse, and I feel very fortunate to have this opportunity to be an educator in this day and age. What UDL offers me is an opportunity to reach all of my kids. It offers me an opportunity to stretch my own understanding of education. As a teacher, sometimes I fall into a rut. I have a certain way of teaching, a certain style. What UDL offers me is that opportunity to really expand my vision and to offer me new ways that I can reach all of the kids in my class, all of their diverse learning needs. I was fortunate enough last year to work with Charlie Rathbone, and I just want to comment on, I think, the exciting thing that came out of that partnership for me as an educator, and I worked with my teaching partner Laura Greve and Charlie. Having Charlie Rathbone there as a professional to help guide us through this process, to help us learn and understand UDL, to take a look at the curriculum we were developing and altering, to give us feedback on it, to be there as we were teaching the lessons that we developed, and then afterwards, to have reflective conversations on that practice, so valuable for me as an educator. And so that model, that partnership, I suppose, I think is something, as we look towards expanding towards other schools, being able to incorporate that for other educators throughout the district. Yeah, I think, I'm going to stop there, because usually I wind up kind of repeating myself, and I also really enjoy just questions as well, so.
So I want to invite Bobby.
Yeah, sure. You know, I would say one of the most compelling aspects of this partnership, and one of the reasons the Board should consider its implications, are because of how this kind of partnership really encompasses a lot of the district initiatives. So we look at arts integration, obviously, that's the mission of our school and the magnet. You look at UDL and how its inclusive practices focuses on MTSS, special ed, diversity and equity. You look at teacher reflection on teaching practices and creating assessments that are appropriate for students, that falls right into our professional learning community. And then, as Judy mentioned, it's about the classroom behavior issues, and talking about that with resident artists and teaching artists, and teachers reflecting with those artists. That's bringing in our PBIS. So again, we're looking at this larger partnership, and how effective it is in encompassing all those aspects of, the things that we're asked to do, the myriad of things that teachers and the staff of this district are asked to do on a daily basis. And be able to do that through a partnership like this is really exciting for me as an administrator, and I can see the joy it brings and the engagement it brings to our students, most importantly.
And one other thing to add is that last year, we had eight different classrooms work with trained teaching artists that learned the UDL model through the course that they were taking at St. Michael's College. And this year, we're going to follow that up again with probably another eight different classrooms that get to the opportunity to work with a trained teaching artist, where they collaborate with the teacher on an integrated unit, they set learning goals, learning targets, then they, you know, complete the residency, and then they assess the residency afterwards. And I think it brings so much to our students, so much to the excitement and the engagement that we want our students to feel when they're learning. So I just feel like that's a phenomenal group of kids to meet each year through a residency program with VSA Vermont. It's been really, really awesome.
And I think, too, just to expand on that quickly, and then I'll stop, is that that in itself is an embedded form of professional development. Teachers don't have to go to conferences or be away from the school to improve their practice. They're working with these teaching artists, and the skills that they bring, artistic and otherwise, are really enhancing what teachers are doing in the classroom.
So Victor Kurzak and Barry Guesner are both very involved in this partnership to the district, to see how we can expand this, so that all the students can benefit. And we welcome your questions, to whatever extent we still have time.
We have time for a couple of questions. Commissioner Kirk?
Two questions. One is, the three-credit course you mentioned, is that geared towards all grade levels or just applicable to certain grade levels?
It can be used in many grade levels.
It can be, you know, elementary school to high school. Some of the trained teaching artists that are taking that course prefer to work with older grades, some of them prefer to work with younger grades. It's just the variety of artists that are taking the course, so open to grade levels.
Thanks. And the second question is, what do you envision as the point of entry for expanding this in the district in terms of, and working into the curriculum?
So, you know, one of the things that we're exploring is something called the novice-to-expert model, and it would involve a widening circle of teachers who could share practice. And, you know, as Gavin was telling me earlier, it's one thing, you can get a lot from an introduction to UDL, but it also, and really make a difference, but it also takes years of practice. And so to have a building community of practice among teachers across schools, that's what we're looking at.
And there's one other piece of that, which is that the group of collective artists and artists organizations are planning to apply for some larger grants that would meet the needs of the greater district. So that's also sort of in the role.
Commissioner Kleiman?
I just want to put a plug in for this, because my daughter graduated from IAA, the Integrated Arts Academy, and is, she wants to come back, because they're doing math worksheets that have no art. So, we miss it.
Well, we hope to be able to.
Go to hunt really soon.
We hope to be able to help.
Well, I think the PLC Network should provide this chance to go, use the novice-to-expert, but for the developing experts at IAA to move into the other schools and kind of use the experience and knowledge you have to at least start to introduce these ideas.
Yeah, we don't want what we've taken from this experience over the last six years to be exclusively something that IAA does. I think we do exceptionally well. Another thing that's exceptional about our teachers is how they open their practice and share their practice. I think they do that better than any educators that I've ever had the pleasure of working with. And so having teaching artists just traipse through your classroom and observe, or community members, or prospective parents, I mean, the list goes on and on. We have people in our building every day, students, that just go into the classrooms to observe what we're doing, and we hope through that, we're providing a learning experience, and I think it makes us a more reflective staff as a result of it.
Thank you very much for coming and sharing exciting things going on in the district. It's nice to hear. Next up, we have a Partnership for Change update on the Parents for Change. Hal, are you the one that's?
Dawn Hosley.
Oh, I didn't see Dawn. Maybe she didn't come in. She's hiding out.
Dawn Hosley.
Okay. See, I thought Dawn was coming, but I hadn't seen her yet.
Good evening, everybody. I appreciate your time this evening. I'm Nick Klein. I have four children in the Burlington School District. I'm an organizer with Parents for Change. We're the lead community partner with the Partnership for Change, and we appreciate your time today. Tonight, we're going to share with you some of our organizing work and our learning, which we presented our public action in June. I'd like Jenny to share our credentials with you.
Hi. Jennifer Foo. I currently have two children in the Burlington School District, one in ninth grade at VHS and one in sixth grade at Evans. So I'm here today to read the credentials. We are parents in Youth for Change, we're students, we're family members, we're parents from many different neighborhoods and backgrounds. We are families who lived in Vermont for generations, and families from many different countries. We've come together today because we have concerns. We have concerns about our youth reaching high goals and being college and career ready. We work to improve how our community and schools prepare young people for the future. We are Change.
Thank you, Jenny. Good evening. I'm Duncan Schuffer, and I'm a partner, part of the Partnership in Youth for Change, group that currently meets twice a week at the VNA family room. I've gone to school in Burlington most of my life. I'm currently a senior at VHS. I will share a little bit of the research that we did today and what we learned. To understand how students prepare for the future, we had 10 research meetings, took a research trip to another school, and surveyed 100 VHS students and reviewed eighth-grade test data, as well as national research on college readiness. At our June public action, we shared the research that we had done over eight months, as well as personal stories from parents and students. We were excited to have several school board members attend. Over the summer, we mailed each school board member our reports. We recognized that the high school is doing great work in many places, but our research, we asked, because of our research, we asked school leaders to commit to strengthening critical relationships with high school students, to help them develop and achieve their college and career readiness goals. You can review our summary research report or on the blue paper we have brought copies of tonight. Now I will invite Krista White and Fabiola Mujumbo to speak.
Good evening. My name is Krista White. I'm the mother of four children. I was born in Burlington, and all three of my now adult children went through Burlington High School several years ago. When I went to school in Burlington, I really benefited from being in an incredible alternative program that was personalized and empowering. I was part of an incredibly close-knit group of students and teachers. I'm very excited about Burlington High School moving toward student-centered learning. I know it worked well for me. It opened my eyes and put me, it opened my eyes to the world and put me in the driver's seat of my education. It awoke my passion for learning and education. I was able to develop my interests and build skills and a career. I wish that I could say that my children had the same educational experiences. The environment did not provide them with the support they needed to be successful at Burlington High School. There was no point person for them or I to connect with. I felt alone in trying to navigate the system and get them the education they deserved. My eldest son, Nick, didn't make it through high school. He did not feel connected, and when issues arose, he had no advocate within the system. He left his senior year and chose to obtain his GED. My other son, Jacob, was strong academically but barely made it through to graduation. My daughter, Erica, chose to leave VHS in her sophomore year and chose to attend an alternative program where she was known well. With the individual attention she received in the alternative program, she was able to apply her strengths in a supportive environment. I got involved in Parents and Youth for Change, because I want my youngest son, Hunter, to have a very different experience. Hunter started middle school in the fall. I know firsthand the power of personalized learning and personal relationships. I believe an advisory program will ensure that when my son, Hunter, reaches high school, he will be supported in getting the most out of his high school experience, and that I will have a partner. For me personally, the stakes feel very high. This is my last chance to see one of my children succeed in high school, and for Hunter and so many of our youth, it's their only chance.
My name is Fabiola. I'm a senior at Burlington High School. I was born in the Congo and lived here in the US for about 10 years now, and attended the Burlington Schools for four years. I've had many wonderful opportunities at VHS and have received support at VHS as I struggle with some challenging personal issues. But for years, I was having a really hard time, and I never told anyone until last year. A friend helped me to start reaching out to some folks at the school, and I really received a lot of help from the school guidance counselors, my family, and help outside of school. Even with all the support I had accessed, I believe we really need an advisory program at VHS, and that it will really make a difference. I think connecting with the same teacher every day, someone who checked in with me about how things are going in school, outside of school, and at home would have helped me tremendously. When things got tough for me, my family and I were able to get help from the school and from other groups. But I would have felt so much safer and more comfortable and gotten help sooner if I had a teacher who knew me well that I could talk to. I also had a chance to go on a trip to visit the Med School in Providence, Rhode Island. It was incredible to see how their advisory worked. I know that an advisory program will build relationships, and building relationships is especially the number-one key when it comes to being successful and working hard as a student and a learner. An advisory program would have really helped me, and it will also help many students.
I'm Jess Atwood, and I have two kids in Burlington School, and I'm a parent leader. At our June 4th public action, we asked and got commitment from VHS principal Amy Meloncamp and partnership director Hal Colston to, one, create a design team to plan for an advisory program that consists of those directly impacted by advisory, teachers, parents, and students, including representation from our parent and Youth for Change group, as well as individuals with advisory expertise by August 27, 2014. Two, provide Partnership for Change resources and support for the team. being known well, and creating personal learning plans tied to proficiencies that include developing and reaching college and career readiness, skills and goals. And four, ensure that advisory design team has the time support and active participation needed so they can effectively design an advisory team and develop an implementation plan before June 1, 2015.
Hi. I'm Dawn Moskowitz and I am really excited we were able to bring together some of our parent and youth leaders today. We also have Dylan with us here for moral support and Infinite, one of our organizers as well. I am a parent of a VHS student and a community organizer with Parents and Youth for Change. We are very excited that Principal Melencamp launched the advisory design team at VHS in August. With support from the partnership, the team is facilitated by Beth Brody, a Burlington teacher and advisory expert. For years, well before we even began doing our research, groups of teachers at VHS have been working to figure out what it would take to develop a successful advisory program. The concept of advisory is simple. Students who have a relationship throughout their high school years with a teacher advisor who really gets to know them, holds them accountable and helps them make decisions about classes and activities, are better equipped to make the most of their high school experience and are more prepared for their future. Small advisory groups with more individualized attention and a long-term relationship ensure that all students are challenged and supported to reach high expectations. Figuring out how to do advisory well, from a shared vision and goals to professional development and logistics, requires hard work. This month, we, the organizers at Parents and Youth for Change, are beginning one-to-one conversations with teachers. Our goal is to meet with every VHS teacher, to understand their perspective, ideas and concerns. We hope that we can count on all of our school board members to partner with teachers, administrators, parents and students to help VHS develop a system that ensures that students are known well, develop meaningful personal learning plans and have the support to reach their college and career readiness goals. We are excited for these critical next steps. Thank you.
Commissioner Clayman? I don't know. I have one quick question that I think would be helpful for the board. I know that Dawn, you and I have talked about this in the past, so whoever would like to answer, could you, 30 seconds, the difference between advisory and homeroom? Because I think a lot of people hear advisory and they think homeroom.
So, I feel like that is one of the biggest pitfalls of people thinking of advisory and whether the need advisory should be used. But advisory is an intentional program where teachers actually are using curriculum around what they're doing with that time. So there is, you know, team building with all of the students that's intentional. There is specific programming related to what ninth graders need to do. There's time for kids to develop and reflect on their learning and get support from the group. So it's an intentional program. Most schools who do it well have an advisory coordinator, have a really thought-through program of activities that all teachers are consistently providing across the school in a consistent way that goes ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th. So for example, in 11th grade, there's a lot more, in the advisories we've seen, there's a lot more focus on, you know, what do you need to know about planning for after high school? What are important things that you need to be doing in 11th grade? In the advisory programs we've seen, student-led conferences are often a part of it. So students are actually working on creating their portfolios and identifying and evaluating their progress and then preparing to meet with their parents to share like their learning and their progress and their goals for the next year and after high school. So, you know, as far as I know, homeroom is kind of a place to take attendance. I don't know very much about homeroom.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's time coming out this evening. All right. I don't know where Brian's hiding. Do we? Walked out for a second. Brian, instead of, next up is the superintendent search update. Do you mind if we tie that in with the ad hoc superintendent search committee report later on in there? So we don't have that. Okay. So at this point, moving on to the superintendent's report, first item up is the CCTA bus passes, the progress being made in that discussion.
So, I'll speak to that. Based on the feedback that I got from ITC meeting, I decided to move forward and implement the best plan we could come up with for bus passes to meet the budgetary, attempt to meet the budgetary target and still stay within the board policy for transportation. So the plan is based on the use of student IDs and it has two parts. One is grade six through 12, the middle school and the high school. So, the, all students get IDs. Students who are free and reduced lunch will also get a CCTA logo on it, which allows the bus driver to just see the logo and let them on the bus without any, let me just, with a charge. Every time anybody gets on the bus, the bus driver clicks a button. Doesn't matter. It just depends which button they click. If they see one of the CCTA logos from us, they'll click a button that says, "Charge the school district $0.60 for that ride." Anybody else can purchase the ID badge with a logo through My School Lunchbox for $150 for the remainder of the year, we're going to implement November 3rd. That's a slight discount of about 4 and 1/3% of what it would cost if you rode every single day. So it's not a great deal, but for a lot of people, you know, not having to worry about it, $150, My School Lunchbox, and then the student gets one with an ID badge. Or, parents could choose to get something direct from CCTA through one of the regular channels. So, one of the options is a 10 punch ticket, which, which are under 18, costs $6 for 10 rides. Or a monthly bus pass, which I think is a pretty good discount as well. I don't know the exact number. So parents have options, or they can carpool or other things. So that's the options for the sixth through 12 students. One of the things we talked about with the elementary school students is that every elementary school student should be wearing a badge in case they get lost on the bus or run around someplace. They should all have ID badges as well. So that's just a general security process for all of our students. Any student who is, who meets the board policy of being more than 7/10ths of a mile from the school will get a CCTA logo on it as well. So they'll be able to ride the neighborhood special bus, get on that, show the logo and we get charged for that. All other kids, if they're closer than that, they'll have an ID badge, but they'll get charged. Now, parents, we haven't even talked about whether parents could purchase, didn't think about whether parents could purchase it if they wanted their kid to ride if it was only 3/10ths of a mile away. So that's one of those, one of those open questions. We did share this with the principals for discussion and we are ready to implement it November 3rd based on any feedback that came out of this meeting.
Questions for?
Yes, I guess more of a comment. I mean, things like this need communication with the parents as, you know, deep as we can. I mean, I think, as much as anything, it's just a comment that, you know, we're hearing about this for the first time. No one else in the district is aware of it except for those of us who, you know, asked for it in the budget process and the board. And I think it's important that communication is taken, you know, there's an important communication event here.
Thank you for that. We do have something ready to go. We were just waiting for this meeting to-
Commissioner Clayman?
Okay, so, I'm a little concerned, particularly, now, is this, with the middle school and high school, if you're not free and reduced lunch and you live, say, three miles away, you have to pay for a bus to get to school? Is that what I'm understanding?
If you're not free and reduced lunch, you'll have to pay to ride a bus to get to school. Yes.
I find this fairly objectionable, in the sense that I think there's a lot of people who are now forced to take the bus to school from the Old North End, who may or may not on paper qualify for free and reduced lunch. I just think it's a problem. If we're forcing students to go to a school that they can't walk to or safely bicycle to, I feel it's, personally, I feel it's kind of the district's responsibility to make sure they can get there without extra cost.
Commissioner Clayman?
I just want to comment that it was the board that made the decision that because of our deficit problem last year, that one of the ways that we would reduce our expenditures was to reduce spending on transportation by acquiring non-free and reduced lunch kids. So it really reflects a board decision last year relative to our budget constraints.
Commissioner Clayman?
I share your concern on that. There is also the, you know, the general, if I was understanding it correct, that the intent of providing bus services, not, you know, bus service as a right, it's offered as a service and an option because it's an important one for a lot of parents and families, you know, myself included over the years. So it is, it has always been walking down a funny line for me on to what extent should we versus we would like to. I would be interested to know at some point, Paul, expected numbers on that? Because frankly, my first reaction before you got into further explanation was, free and reduced kids have a branded ID badge. I remember former Superintendent Collins told, you know, the story of how years ago there were different colored lunch trays so that people would know what to get charged. I want to be mindful of potential stigma. If it turns out that, no, you know, you've got that, but then there's extra, you know, large numbers of kids that will also have that as a result. So to make it not really, you know, an issue, then that's one thing. If we're looking at, you know, outside the free and reduced lunch kids, a small number of others, then I would like us to be mindful of that and maybe have some more consideration on that point.
That's, we don't know what's going to happen. I think probably looking at it after a quarter, I'll start November, February 3rd, we'll probably come back with some more details on that.
I'm wondering what kind of plan you have in place to track both the success of this program, or I don't know if success is the right word, but the way it's accepted or not accepted and whether things are working. So what kind of data program you have to make sure we're taking that data? And then second, how are we sure that this is going to save us money? Where has that come into the analysis? How did you get to the point of knowing this is what you needed to do to save X amount of money?
We don't know what the money saved is going to be until we actually run it. The data will come from the CCTA bills and from the administrative assistants who know how many badges have been sold through the My Lunchbox program compared to the number that were pre-reduced lunch to begin with. So these will be very, there won't be specific tracking of kids per day or anything like that. There's no way for us to do that.
So how did you come to think this would save enough money? I mean, I'm sure the plan is good. I had trouble following all the details and that's not really my concern, what the details are. But my concern is to make sure that this is a big change for the community. We do want to make sure it's actually going to create the savings that we hope it will, so.
There was no way to know if it'll create the savings or not.
There wasn't an analysis, an estimates or some assumptions that were made or some, you know?
This was a last minute decision back in April, April 27th and we will, time will tell. That's the only way we're going to know. And if, the board may decide that it isn't worth it at some point, or maybe they'll decide that it really does save a lot of money.
And if I may, I believe the decision went that this was the maximum amount of savings within the parameters that the board gave, that the most that we were in a spot to do. Whether it gets the entire targeted savings, that was the goal of the budget, I think, is unclear at this point. But there, without, but this was the biggest savings that we were going to be able to get while having something that was believed to be a practical use.
May I make a request that we have some follow-up so that the board can know what the financial impact of this is? I would ask you to just maybe keep us informed.
I, oh, I said that already.
Yeah. Commissioner Kirk, then Commissioner Clayman, then Commissioner Porter.
Can you just explain to me that K6 children again?
K5.
K5, thank you.
So the policy says if you're over 7/10ths of a mile from an elementary school, the school board may provide transportation.
Right.
May being the operative word here. If the school board has decided to provide free transportation for those kids, in other words, we're paying for it, the way we know that they're 7/10ths of a mile is they have a badge with them.
Okay. So the logo for those K5 kids is only, just to say you live more 2/4 of a mile away?
Yeah.
Doesn't do anything else? No economic, nothing? Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Commissioner Clayman?
This may be too much of a minor comment for now, but what happens when the kids forget their badges? Or lose them? Or, do they not get on the bus if they don't have their badge with them? If they're free and reduced lunch and they just don't have it with them?
The bus driver can only operate within their own parameters. They can't make decisions about yes or no. They have to follow their, their separate social agency.
Right.
If a student loses a badge, we can replace it, but it won't be immediate. I mean, it'll be, they'll have to get to school, say, "I lost my badge," get one printed out. We can do that remotely, get a picture and print one out. So there's a 60%, 60 cent cost for that if they lose a badge. I think at the high school, it's a $5 charge if you lose your badge to get it replaced. We try to encourage high school students to be responsible that way.
So hypothetically, this is actually a personal concern for me. If my 10-year-old sixth grader forgets her badge at home and is waiting at the bus stop, she's going to just have to come back home because I don't have a car to take her to school? And then be late? I mean, I'm just-
Or give her a dollar in case she forgets her badge.
Okay. I appreciate all the work you've done on this plan. I just-
What happened to her? Hope you have to have her badge right now.
They don't have badges, yeah.
They've had badges in previous years. Last year and this year, there have been no IDs. But in previous years, there had been IDs in order to ride a bus and it was requisite to show that ID in previous years. Commissioner Porter?
Do you remember what the amount was that was to be saved by the-
$120,000.
What was it?
The goal was $120,000.
Okay.
So, this is really just for you, Stephanie, stating the obvious, that if it's not going to be realized through this, you're going to have to find it someplace. Fair enough.
Commissioner Kirk?
So first, I want to declare that I work for CCTA. So I will abstain from voting any votes that have to do with CCTA. And if, and I lost the chair to stop me from commenting if I should, seriously, or Joe was in the room conveniently. So I just want to share a couple things more with my board hat on, that, you know, last spring and, and I think in the next few months, we did and we are going to face challenges with the budget. And our priority was, direct educational costs to children should be funded first. And we looked at all of the things that are not required, like cutting paraeducators that are paid with local taxes. And we looked at, and transportation fell under that. In general, we are a community that has been extremely generous, but we have seen massive, massive cuts at the federal level to education. And we are experiencing, because of that, the state response to try and equalize our funding for education and that as well is under incredible political fire. So we, let's remember that we are all in this together, but we are all experiencing the fact that our economy has changed drastically through federal tax policies so that we no longer have the money to pay for the education that we want to give our kids. And because of that, things like transportation fall off the table, except for the most needy. We are between a rock and a hard place and there is no easy answer. We want to be able to do everything. But we are also a very generous and well-off community in many ways. And so, we need to ask parents to step up to pay for things. There were, you know, ideas on the table were the computers. the state response to try and equalize our funding for education, and that as well is under incredible political fire. So, we, let's remember that we are all in this together, but we are all experiencing the fact that our economy has changed drastically through federal tax policies, so that we no longer have the money to pay for the education that we want to give our kids. And because of that, things like transportation fall off the table, except for the most needy. We are between a rock and a hard place, and there is no easy answer. We want to be able to do everything, but we are also a very generous and well-off community in many ways. And so, we need to ask parents to step up to pay for things. There were, you know, ideas on the table were the computers. Do we want people to pay for the computers? We said, "No." Do we want people to pay an athletic fee? We can't do that by state law. Do we want people to pay, you know, for the guest program, whatever? You know, we can't do it all. And so, we went to transportation for $120,000, and this is the result. And we asked staff to do this work, and it's important to remember that it's a difficult decision. It's going to hit some families hard, and parents will have to get better at remembering to give their kid their badge or the dollar. This, we have been able to take care of kids to a certain standard that we can no longer take care of them if we are going to make these other choices around educational programming, like we just heard. So, I just ask everybody to please keep in mind that we're in this because of the federal and economic and tax changes that have put the burden of funding education on us, not on the people and the corporations, and they sound like Bernie Sanders, and the multinational corporations are getting millions and millions of tax breaks, so that we're in this situation. So, I'd just like everybody to keep that in mind. Are you going to vote for Bernie now?
Let's assume he wasn't going for Bernie.
So, moving on, moving on. Real quickly, I don't know if, Stephanie, if you had anything that you wanted to say about the buses for Hunt from the Old North End?
Yes. Just briefly. So, attached was a letter that I sent out to families, but I just wanted to stress two important updates, since this was, you heard from families last month at the board meeting, and I just wanted to report out on two big items, that with the district continuing to partner with CCTA, we have made some great strides. And so, one of those was that there was actually a bus that was doing a morning route, and in a direction other than towards Hunt, and with Tim Bradshaw from CCTA, and Victor Prusak from Burlington School District, both riding that bus on a number of different occasions. Tim was able to determine that actually that bus was not needed in the direction that it was previously going, and was able to rework routes so as not to leave a route without transportation, but essentially it allowed another bus to go in the direction of Hunt at a time, 7:25, 7:30-ish, that was a good option for families, and provided essentially a second bus going in the direction of Hunt in the morning to help with the overcrowding, and provide a bus at a time that seemed reasonable for families. In addition, we were able to work with CCTA around the Wednesday early release that we have, leaving Hunt and making a trip back into the city. So, I just want people to know, the board to be aware, that those were two really big advancements that we were able to do by continuing to partner with CCTA, and we really appreciate Tim and his staff, and certainly we here appreciate Victor from Burlington School District, continuing to take the concerns from family, and continuing to work on plans until we got something that we feel is the best possible that we can offer to families in providing that transportation to and from Hunt, both morning and afternoon.
Thank you for the hard work everyone to make that work, and for the parents who brought it, continue to bring it to our attention. Paul and Miranda, explanation of recent revenue sources.
Does that hand up coming around?
We got some questions a couple of days ago about some revenue sources. It's somewhat complicated, so I don't think this is the type of thing that we can digest in a minute or two. Respectfully, I would suggest that people take some time to study it and prepare some questions to come back, but let me give you the gist of it quickly. The Burlington Electric Department, overcharging. There's a conversation between the city's attorney and our attorney, the amount of about $748,000. There are strict statutory requirements on how funds may be used, and that's probably the thing that you need to digest the most because of what the voted, voter-approved budget was. This is not, I, it's not free money to choose to do whatever the board wants to do with it, but that's a much longer discussion. The money from TAFT is 1.6 million. According to our attorney, it's supposed to come in no later than 30 days from the signing of the lease, but there is something on the agenda tonight, the MOU in the ITC meeting that is related to that. And again, the options for how the money can be used are described by statute. The last one is the 1.2 million. That was part of the voter-approved budget. It included 1.2 million set aside to pay off the deficit fund balance. And we do not know what the audited balance will be. There's an estimate between 400 and 500,000 of a deficit fund. If there's a surplus, again, there's statutory requirements. The voters have to decide what has to be done, but this is still quite a complicated discussion. So, again, we just got these Friday, ran into a lot of research. Joe weighed in on a couple of things, but I don't know if he's had the time to really go into, dig into this. But that's about why.
I would just supplement Paul's conversation by indicating that with regard to the Burlington Electric, the $748,000 and change represents one half of the amount that the city will receive from Burlington Electric, looking back over a period of six years. There was some conversation as to whether six years was the appropriate time at the city council. As your attorney, I'm not greatly troubled by that, by that period of time. That is typically the resolution period if you're looking at a contract right, and there is, there is an attributed amount of interest. It's about, it would be about 700 and, well, the 48,000 probably represents the interest amount. The expectation is that the money will be received in full by the school district by October 31. The plan of attack at the moment is that as soon as Eileen Blackwood and I are comfortable with the memorandum of understanding, and we're essentially there, the matter will be presented to the city finance board and the city council this coming Monday. So, I think that at least on this aspect, we're essentially there on the receipt of these funds.
So, what I'd like to do is, we're going to have, start and ask people just to have questions of clarification. I'll go around one time for people to ask their questions of clarification. If there are comments that need to be made after that point, we'll go ahead and do it. Commissioner Porter, I saw first.
Go side. Can you clarify in regards to this unexpected revenue, and then the constraint that we can only spend what was approved?
The, with regard to the, with regard to the revenue, we did have conversations with the Department of Education about any concerns that, because of the elimination of payments in lieu of taxes going to the school district in the future, whether we'd be able to receive these dollars. And we received the assurance of the agency that these dollars, because they're look-back dollars and reflective of mistakes that were made and overcharging that occurred, we will receive those dollars and be able to retain them. The, this is based on a city charter provision relating to payments in lieu of taxes, which indicates that the school district will receive one half of the cash received. So, the source, the source of the dollars is the, is the city charter, and it is not unprecedented to correct errors that are made.
I'm sorry. I apologize, just for, on the clarification side. I was more concerned with, we can't spend it.
Oh, 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 okay.
All right. We voted on $67 million. If all of a sudden, we have in revenue 67,700, we still have, can only spend 67.
The, the way, the way the statute is set up, you're, you're, you vote an amount, and that sets your budget amount. I think, however, there is still conversation that can be had with the state about this sort of fund, which is erroneously not received in prior years. So, I, for one, am not prepared to finally say at this moment, there's no possibility of expending these dollars. Instead, they have to go, they have to float forward for deficit retirement. That may be, that may be the result, but Commissioner Porter, I, for one, am not there yet, and I think it needs a robust discussion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Curry.
So, just, I have a question of clarification, and then a question related to the response you just gave, Commissioner Porter. One is, are these all fiscal year 15 revenues?
They, they will be certainly received in 15, whether...
Where are they being recognized?
Your auditors will require some recognition going back into prior years. I doubt it.
Okay.
But that's more a accounting audit than it is a law question.
Okay. And my second question is, Joe, based on what you just said, that, that there's, it sounds like AOE used the city charter provision, then we get half the pilot funds, to sanction the district receiving and spending the BED funds. So, my question is, if they relied on that provision in the charter, I'm still confused about why there's an open question about us continuing to get pilot funds on an annual basis.
We worked out an agreement.
I know we did. Why is it okay for them to use the city charter with one hand, and then take it away on the other?
There's a quote about foolish consistency being the hobgoblin of small minds that comes to my mind. But I would just say that we made, we made a judgment, an informed judgment based on the best facts available back in the springtime, that we would not contest the AOE position to say that we can't have those dollars going forward in exchange for no challenge looking back. It was a bargain we didn't have to make, but it's a bargain that I think was probably prudent, well, I believed at the time was prudent to make. In terms of why they look at it sometimes, and why they don't, the city charter is state law, and binding on the Department of Education, just like it's binding on us, with one exception, and that is that when it comes to raising revenue, there is a specific provision in Act 60 and Act 68 that says, "Any conflict between a municipal statute, municipal charter provision, and the general statute in 60 and 68 will be resolved in favor of the general statute." So, as they look at the world, they are, they are parsing the question of whether the law that applies specifically to Burlington is usurped or preempted by the general law. And we could, we could have fairly interesting discussion as to whether we agree with them and their choice on all occasions, but I think over the last few months, they've been pretty cooperative, so.
Commissioner Mattson.
On the deficit piece, I just want to point out that when we put a budget amount in to cover a deficit for the, in the fiscal 15 budget, it actually reflects the audited deficit from fiscal 13. Where fiscal 14 comes in will affect the fiscal, the tax rate and the budget that we put forward to the voters next year. So, even if we come in in a different position for fiscal 14 than what, fiscal 14 than what we anticipated, it doesn't have any effect. It needs to get incorporated into our next budget cycle. So, the budget deficit that we are covering was the audited fiscal 13 budget deficit. That's my one sort of clarification on the deficit side of it. And I guess the one thing I do want to, I've got one other comment later, but...
Okay. Other, let's stay with questions for right now. Commissioner Stoll?
I just wondered if one of you two could speak to the issue of reserve funds under number two, under money from TAFT, and then flip the paper over. Also, deposit funds into a reserve fund established at 24 VSA. So, just, you could talk for a minute about how one establishes a reserve fund, and is that something that the board decides, and what kind of purposes can you use money for if they're in a reserve fund?
The statute does permit it, and it, it requires the, the statute speaks of the legislative branch. I would interpret that to mean the school board here, which would be, which would be the legislative branch of the school district. And, and the most provocative point is that you have to indicate what you are establishing a reserve for, what, and you need to be very specific. An analogy is, there are reserve funds on the municipal side for, that are created with housing impact funds, and they have to be used very specifically for housing projects. The district could, if it wished, delineate a programmatic or, or other needs that it would, wants to build up a reserve for, whether it's capital or operating, and, but then it's restricted to that use. Commissioner Stoll?
Thank you.
I have a question on that. Again, so, the TAFT money of 1.6 million, we could conceivably create a reserve fund to ensure that would be targeted specifically for the On Top and Horizons programs to unfold.
I think if we dot all the i's and cross all the t's appropriately, the answer would be yes.
All right. Other discussion on the revenue sources?
Want to make a comment?
Sure, please.
Yeah, and I think the other thing, this idea of a reserve fund, I like the potential sound of it, because I think it fits with the board statement that we made a couple of months ago regarding any revenue that would, the revenue that would come from the TAFT lease. I think additionally, and I'm never sure about how this works within school districts. I mean, there's oftentimes when you get a prepaid lease like this, that you would not, you would not show all of it as revenue. Instead, you would show the revenue over the, over a period of the lease, which would mean that it wouldn't be revenue, but it would be cash flow, which is, but, you know, with school districts, I've seen different things go on where they do cash accounting as opposed to accrual accounting. So, what I would say is that there's another aspect to look into there, because otherwise, if we just recognize it as revenue, what it'll mean is basically just we would have, we will probably show some kind of surplus in the next year. That would affect the, that would affect the tax rate two years out from now, and it'll be all over. And that would be what would happen otherwise, if we don't establish a reserve fund or do a, or use accrual accounting on this.
Just to one supplement to my answer, Commissioner Stoll, I think that what I did not say, and it's important to understand, is that there has to be at least preliminarily a referendum vote to allow for the creation of the reserve account at either an annual or a special district meeting, or city meeting for that purpose. Once that is authorized, then the expenditure is controlled by the district.
Quick, so the authorization is for the specific purpose, or for the fact that we can set up a reserve fund?
It says, I think it is for the setting up of the reserve fund, but you'll, in order, there... order, there's both a political and a legal aspect of that.
Okay, thank you for, for the point.
Commissioner Curry?
So, is my understanding, we actually already have sort of a reserve fund, or a sinking fund, in our, in connection with our bond debt? How does that, in relation to-
I'll let Miranda deal with that, but the-
We do have a separate bank account, and it's tied to our qualified school construction bond and qualified zone A, I don't know what it is. Bonds, that we deposit into on a yearly basis, so that in the year, whenever the bonds are due, we have the principal payment to pay out of that bank account.
Is that a federal financial structure? Is that federal law, or is that just, we're allowed to do that because we're a school?
That was a requirement with the bonds when they were set up.
Oh, it was a requirement of the bond language?
Very, very typically.
Okay.
In connection with either a general obligation bond, or a revenue bond, there are certain security agreements and reserve accounts that have to be set up to make sure that prin, ultimately, that principal and interest are going to be there and paid when they're due. That's, that's really something a bit different than what this statute is talking about.
So, hearing no, no further comment or questions on this, I guess what I would, would ask, and I don't know if this is a, is a reasonable, I don't know if this, I'm not going to make it as a request or a motion at this point, but it seems that it would be helpful to the district and for the board, understanding to see kind of a menu of options as to what we should be doing with this revenue that would be the most financially prudent going forward. Understanding that there are certain strictures from previous motions, the TAF one with money, some of the money being set, you know, set aside to ensure a location for On Top and Horizons, and for the, the BED money prioritizing budget reduction and the like. But it seems that, that a discussion may be at the finance committee level for what, what the menu of options might be that would be financially prudent coming forward. Does that seem a wise direction to go? Yes? All right. So, I don't know if that's, I know that we, maybe jumping up here a little bit on our agenda, that we, we have Nathan coming on, so I don't know if, if, if that's reasonable to have for the next finance meeting or not. I guess we'll, we'll have that conversation maybe between the, the chair of the finance and with Nathan, and with, with you, and whomever needs to be, and on that to, to set up a time to, to do something that would be prudent, but, but reasonable, or expeditious, but reasonable. All right?
May I ask one thing?
Please.
In terms of planning for fiscal sixteen, is it imperative that we set this up before we start to plan for fiscal sixteen? That's my, I don't know enough yet now, just having looked at this for the first time. So, I guess I just would throw that out. Like, how does, how does understanding this help us in terms of moving to fiscal sixteen? And does that create some sort of timeline that we need to look at? Just a question.
Until we answer the question about what the menu of options are, we wouldn't be able to tell. If we can use it for this, then that might affect what your decisions will be in December when we look at your options. I think that'd be the best way to phrase it at this point. But if, if it says, we can only do these things with it, or you need to have a referendum in the city to set up a, a fund, you know, there'll be other options, but we have to proceed regardless.
Commissioner Mattson?
I might add, on some of, I mean, at least two of these, I mean, one thing is ongoing that's going to come up from the audit, which will be the budget deficit for fourteen, and that'll be part of what gets incorporated into our planning documents, that's already there. But these other two items also are, you know, I think it's good to have a plan for them, but they're also one-time events, so it's not going to, it's not going to be as if we're going to be saying, oh, as we plan for fiscal sixteen revenue, will it change our thinking? I don't think that's going to happen. It might, there might be some changes, but I think, I, I don't see it, because they're one-time events, I don't see it, it's important to have the plan, but I don't, I don't see it as quite as strong, and I need to be quick on that for that reason.
Right. Moving forward, overview of FY revenue, fourteen revenue and expenditures.
We went over this in a lot of detail at finance, and nine of you were here, so I'm not sure what additional things there were. The Free Press reported pretty closely, and several other notes to the editor, and a My Turn talked about it. There were several questions about details, but without having the sheets in front of you, and it's, what, what sort of questions are there in, in general that, that we might be able to answer with respect to that?
Commissioner Mattson?
I had sent a couple to, to Miriam, and I, you know, she had answered them, and I'm just, not that I'm not trusting you, Miriam, I'm just going to ask the same questions again, pretty much. My understanding on the healthcare, the big change in the healthcare piece, it's a one-time, in effect, change of when we're recognizing an expense between years. Was it something, but it's a one-time, but is it a one-time of, first question, be, is it a one-time event, and maybe just a little more explanation?
This is accumulation of an overestimation of healthcare costs over the transitions of the business managers for the past three, four years. I don't know exactly how far back the reconciliation went, but if we always estimate healthcare at eight percent, and it comes in at five percent, then we start to accumulate a liability on the books.
Yeah, okay.
So, Miranda and Matt did a reconc, a reconciliation of that.
Yeah, okay.
So, from that perspective, it's a one-time event. Will we, again, overestimate this year? Probably sane to do. Will we make sure we don't accumulate that? I, I think that we've kind of solved that problem.
Okay, I see. That, okay, thanks. I mean, that is very similar to what we saw in cases where we were on the other side of an expense, I think, as well, okay. But that accumulated li, liability, basically, got a, um, there was something else that seemed like it was a one-time event that I was asking, what was the other one I asked you about?
There was an impact fee.
Oh, yeah. Reclassifying debt. There was some reclassification on some of debt payments were, or something like that. And was that all?
The IRS.
No, it wasn't IRS?
Yes, what we did was, in previous years, the interest on the Q skids and Qsabs that we received back from the IRS was actually deposited to the expenditure account code. In last year, what we did was we recognized the interest as revenue, and then you saw the principal payment in the debt service code. So, that's why interest exceeded budget by five or six hundred thousand, and then the offsetting was the debt payment.
Okay. I see. Thank you.
I'm not sure everybody else, just do that for us. I got it. So, let me, let me get a shot. In previous years, we've been assuming that the total expenditure for the bond was two-point-three million. In reality, that is the net expenditure for the bond, because the bond was two-point-nine million, and we're getting six hundred thousand in interest. So, they're just putting two-point-three million as an expenditure. That's not good practice. You should book the expenditure as the real cost, two-point-nine million, and put the revenue, the interest revenue, in revenue account. So, we fixed that. Net, no change, but it looks like six hundred thousand dollars magically appeared here, and an expenditure went up by six hundred thousand, because we're just recording it accurately.
Okay.
Commissioner Porter?
The, a week or so, a little more from now, you're going to come up with your first pass for two thousand and sixteen. Is the unexpected revenue and expenses that we realized in two thousand and fourteen at least considered as part of two thousand and sixteen, from the point of, was this a one-time occurrence, or is this going to be a recurrence that we have to learn from? We want to make sure these pieces are included in the two thousand and sixteen budget.
I'm not sure I fully understand the-
Five hundred thousand dollars for salary, for salaries that we're not planning for, all right? Do you now have them planned for in two thousand and sixteen?
And fifteen.
Okay, that's where I'm going.
Yes, that's, that's, that would be the same process, is to make sure we do. As we've talked about in several board groups, the position control and managing the payroll is the biggest single item in our budget, seventy-five percent payroll and benefits. So, careful tracking of that, staying underneath what it is, is, is critical to the success of this budget. So, yes, absolutely, that is the number-one priority.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stoll?
I'm asking this question now, just because some constituents have asked it to me, and I just wanted to answer for it. So, the unexpected revenue from fiscal thirteen special education reimbursements that came in, I think it was about six, six hundred fifty thousand, and netted down to about four hundred thousand dollars, because there was an underpayment in another part. So, somehow, we underestimated how much revenues we were going to get back as, as special ed reimbursement. And people have asked me, you know, how that happened, and how is it, what can we do to be better at calculating that? So, I just, I'm not asking for an answer, but I'm just wondering if we're thinking about that as we go forward, how we're going to be estimating the revenues going forward. What's the learning from that, I guess?
That's, that's a, that's a pretty good question. If I were the special ed director, I'd certainly be trying to learn from that. This is Scott, Dylan's second year on the job. There are probably unforeseen, what's the right word? High impact's not the right word. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Cases that will swing things a large number one way or another, so it's a little more challenging in that. The, the intensive reimbursement, is that the right word? I'm not a special ed director.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know how close a handle you can get on that, when you have those individual student variabilities going on. I think it's, he's probably sane to underestimate the revenue and stay within it, and then be happy that a little bit more came in, but I think if you look over the last ten years, and you really went back and looked every single year, you'd see that it's probably just going like this, and he's trying to hit the middle.
Okay.
All right. And we have the introduction of two new directors. See, Nathan here, I don't think Martin is here, but-
So, resumes for both the new finance director and new facilities director are provided on board docs. We are very happy. Nathan is here in the audience, behind David Kirk. Thank you for attending tonight, Nathan. We are very pleased to have both Martin and Nathan joining our administrative team. We think that they bring a lot of, of good knowledge, and their systems work will be very helpful to us as we move forward, both with facilities and with finances. So, we welcome them both to the team.
Thank you. Just going to ask if Commissioner Shamsky or Commissioner Segreino had anything to add. I know they both served on the interview committee for-
Sure. I, I just-
Thank you, Patrick. It's, we had, I was very pleased with the final applicant pool with which we interviewed, very good candidates, and, and Nathan was just an excellent choice, and I, I, it's, I, I cannot wait to work with you, is that, I, I think the stability for people who've been here, like Ben and yourself, who've seen CFOs come and go, is that he, I, I think Nathan is someone who is just, he sees the big picture, the long-term picture. He has just got great vision, and it's like, I think he's going to be a great leader in the school district. No pressure.
I'll just add that, you know, we were very impressed by the and his experience at the Joint Fiscal Office, and some of the challenges in meeting the needs of various stakeholders, and some of the difficult budget decisions that he had to deal with there, is, is just the kind of expertise that we're hoping for here. Not only his financial skills, but also his negotiation skills, and, and making presentations to the public and the board and so forth. I also want to say that the search process was, was very well designed. It was extremely smooth, and I think there was some experience there that can serve us on the superintendent search, that a lot of the process that the HR director had designed worked very, very well. And I was really, really pleased with how well it went, and the high level of discussion regarding the candidates.
All right. Item number six, the consent agenda. If we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
I heard Commissioner Truman, seconded by Commissioner Porter. All of those in favor of the consent agenda? Say aye. Opposition? Consent agenda is moved. I'm going to ask if we could, we're, kind of, change the order, just because, well, no, if, if we could move on to, I think the ad hoc superintendent search committee is, is going to be more than a five-minute discussion, and so, I'm just wondering if we could jump down to number eight, being aware of that we have a timed certain executive session here in, in five minutes, and that if we could move to the ITC committee report.
Well, the committee report really is just, just the MOU on the TAF lease. The MOU is really just, there's, that, just the fact that this, the district will receive the money for the lease of TAF, and, and that UVM will be there for eighty years. The MOU is a process that's been going on for a long ti, the, the TAF lease is a process that's been going on a long time. Delaying the MOU, I don't think will delay the outcome of this process. Well, delaying the MOU would just delay the outcome, the same outcome of this process. The MOU is really just about where the funds are going, and that the city is going to relinquish them to the, to the district. So, I would move that we would accept the MOU.
Seconded by Commissioner Mattson. Any further comment that you'd like to make to the motion?
No.
Commissioner Mattson?
Yeah. When, back in April, we, you know, we effectively approved the lease, and we did approve the lease, we took it to the city and, you know, went through, and so, at this point, when the court ruling came back validating the lease, that actually is something that we are fully committed to. This MOU is the memorandum of understanding that is basically us telling the city that, you know, we are basically taking care of, you know, this building, we are not sort of relinquishing, and we will be responsible for working as landlord with, with the ci, with, I'm sorry, with UVM, and that's the purpose, you know, this U, MOU is not really part of, it's not, UVM is not party to this, it's between us and the city. Important to understand.
Commissioner Porter?
Patrick, I mean, we, we talked about this a couple, a couple of times. The, the only thing I just-
I would just like a clarity on, is, this was looked more holistically when there was
other, other things in discussion at the same time. Are we at any risk now that other things are not being, like, other buildings are not being discussed now? So, anecdotally, this is, the most, the simplest case would be, TAF goes to UVM, we have no place to put the programs. And I don't mean to confuse it with whether it would matter on this MOU. So, is, is that, is that something that still needs to be, you know, is there any room even to decide any of those things that, that we could be at risk, because not everything's in play at now? And frankly, does this MOU have anything to do with any of those things? Should we, could we, should we, at the most extreme, step back and say, let's think about this again?
So, let me take a shot at this. First of all, this MOU does not address the question that you're, you're talking about. This is simply an issue, it really is, it's, it's closer to the Act sixty, sixty-eight stuff, as to who owns the actual property, the city's saying, we don't own it, you own it, and, and you get the revenue, but you also owe the landlord for it. And that's, that's really what this MOU is about. The question that you bring up is, is a good one. There are two, there are two buildings that are, that are, or two programs that are housed in TAF. The On Top and Horizons are alternative, alternative educational placements for, for students for a variety of different, different reasons. And in the motion that was passed back in February, March, I don't remember the exact date on it, one of the things that's, that's explicit in-
one of the things that's explicit in that motion is that the funds from the lease of TAF go to, have to first be used toward finding a location or ensuring that there's going to be a location for those. Because of the way that this was settled in the probate court, we actually have until, we have about twenty months or nineteen months until the end of, until the end of June twenty sixteen before we have to vacate the building. So, we don't have to be out of there for, those programs could complete this year and they could complete the entire next school year in the TAF, in the TAF space without us being in, violating the court agreement on that. That said, you're right, we need to find, we need to move quickly to make sure that we do have those spaces and that we are, we're thinking about students and a population that tends to be vulnerable too. And so, that we need to make sure that we are finding a suitable location for those two programs. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay. Commissioner Garrison?
So, my understanding is moving forward, we really don't have any idea what the expense is going to be to relocate both those schools, Horizon and On Top. And going forward, we've already made a, basically, we've made a deal with, our transaction with UVM. So, we're getting one point six million dollars, but we have no idea what the costs would be going forward to relocate both these schools and start up these and whatever that may be. So, I mean, just looking at this whole idea, it just seems like, you know, we haven't really completed the whole process of trying to make sure we've covered, you know, all our steps.
We could have a larger, right now, I'd like to keep the discussion focused on the MOU. I think it's, I think it's appropriate to have a larger discussion very, very soon as to what the, what the options are. And that actually, those discussions have started at ITC or are going to be coming up at ITC regarding kind of a larger capital fund and capital use in the, in property use in the district. Commissioner Shumsky?
We have a order. We have a motion timed certain eight-thirty for the executive session.
Move to table.
Is there a second?
A second.
We're tabling the move on the MOU. All in favor? The motion that's here on the table? All in favor of tabling this motion? I'm sorry.
Tabling motion. Tabling motion.
No, no.
Not debatable.
Right, okay. Right.
All in favor of tabling this motion? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All in, all opposed to tabling this motion? I'm, I'm gonna vote in opposition to it because I think we need to get this settled now. So, it's seven to seven, the motion does not pass. I hear, is this discussion regarding this, because we do need to move to executive session?
I was just gonna say that, just to remind you guys that it has nothing to do with whether or not we lease the building. It's just, I'm gonna pick you stuff. Okay. Just clarifying that.
I'm gonna move to a vote for the, all in favor of passing the MOU as brought up by Commissioner Kirk. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Can we have a roll call, vote, just hand vote? Those in favor of passing the, those in favor of the MOU, raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Those opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six. One, two, three, four, five, six. You have to have a specific reason for abstention? Well, you just, it can't be just that you don't want to vote by Robert Verris. The motion passes in a seven to six vote. At this point, I would entertain a motion for executive session. Commissioner Seguino, seconded by Commissioner Mattson. All those in favor of going into executive session?
Just for the...
To say the whole.
Under the new law, you need to articulate that you're going in to discuss contractual negotiations in the nature of court bargaining, premature disclosure of which could put the school district at a substantial disadvantage.
Does the motion need to...
The motion needs to say that.
All in favor of going into executive session?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We will meet in executive session in room one G in three minutes. We have a quorum that are back in here, so I'm gonna go ahead and move forward. If we could have Commissioner Chena, an ad hoc superintendent search committee report.
Were we going to...
That'll be, we'll put, I was gonna put that at the very end of the agenda.
So, we, ad hoc search committee met tonight and we talked about the process moving forward for the superintendent search. So, we have a proposal to present to you.
Before we go to the proposal, would you just catch us up, Commissioner Chena, on some of the work that's gone on, a very, very great play here over the course of the last week or two.
Well, we just met last... Yeah, so, I mean, what I'm trying to do is, it is late, I'm trying to be efficient. What I will say is, we all met, I'm gonna stand if that's okay, I just need to move. So, last week, we all met together, so I believe everyone here was, everyone was present, right? And you heard from Gary, right? That on, that I had some conversations with various board members who came to me with their ideas, also various community members sharing their opinions and their thoughts, SAC members, et cetera. Me and Patrick met and talked and drafted up this, sort of, skeleton proposal that was then brought to the ad hoc committee tonight and we're gonna review that with you in a minute. So, that's one thing that's gone on in the last week. The other thing is just the SAC met on Monday night. We got the, got the first draft of the position analysis. We got it that morning, so the SAC had a couple of hours, maybe five or six hours, to review it, people who work, et cetera. So, we kind of got, came together without even me having a chance to thoroughly review it. So, we only got through a very small piece on Monday. That being said, the plan moving forward is I'm gonna be meeting with Beth Trzansky from the SAC and we are gonna look at what's left and see if we can figure out a way to come up with a process so we can get through that in an effective fashion next Monday because we need to finish that work next Monday. I've also, to address this, there's also, the entire SAC has been asked to go and look through vetting questions and do their homework, so to speak, in advance. So, that being said, next Monday, we're gonna run through this position description, do the vetting questions and at the end of the meeting, have a second draft prepared that will then go to the community for community input sessions. The proposed date right now is October thirtieth. The board did express concern about it being as early as possible and I can't remember right now the reason why it can't be on the twenty-third. The reason it can't be on the twenty-seventh is there's a, there's a community event happening and concern is that we won't get attendance because of this event. So, thirtieth is the day we're looking at for that, for community input. That being said, the consultant has said, Bill Bryan has said, or, yeah, Bill Bryan said, what we have after the SAC looks at it is gonna be ninety percent finished. So, he said if we need to send something to Gary, we can send him that second draft and he can start working based on that and then do a few refinements at the end. So, he's, he's saying we could stay on timeline at this point. So, that's where the SAC's at. I think we need to move on to this, but I want to make sure everyone was informed.
And that could be completed, when would the SAC's draft be?
Monday.
It would be, it would be done on Monday.
Well, it has to go to Bill, but he's saying that that, once he looks over what we did, he can send it back to us and we can... The question is, does the full board or the ad hoc want to look at that before it goes to Gary? I would think at least the ad hoc, we should look at what came out of the SAC before it goes to Gary, unless the full board wants to see it. I could forward it to everyone, people could take a look. There are some, there was one concern David expressed to me, which was that the full board wasn't receiving what the SAC gets. And I didn't think we needed to send everything to the full board first. So, if, you know, if people feel like that needs to happen, I could keep the whole board in the loop of everything the SAC does. Yeah?
Wouldn't the agendas for your committee have the documents?
It didn't for this, in this case, because Bill didn't send it to me until eleven in the morning. Moving forward, hopefully...
Right, well, then what you do is attach it as part of the minutes. It was a document.
It will be attached to the...
To the minutes, yeah, so that's available to the public.
Yeah.
Do you have a question about the process that Brian was just talking about?
Yeah, just to stay updated on the process. Can we just, instead of the whole board, can board members ask you just to be added to your email list? So, we can be up to, I don't want to get, you pass it by the board, like you were just saying, the ad hoc board or the full board. I don't want to prove, but can you just include members who request just to be added on the email so we can see what's going on?
I can carbon copy anyone.
Okay.
I mean, that's all it was asking for.
I mean, I just didn't think I needed to do that.
You don't need, I just...
So, at this point moving forward, I can do it if it's what people want.
But it will still, it'll still be available on board docs.
It would be available on board docs. If you would like to be put on the SAC mailing list, please contact Brian and he would, and he'll add you to that list.
I'll just let you know everything I say to them.
Did you want to talk to...
Yeah, so, we crafted this tonight. I will say that all five of the ad hoc committee members approved the skeleton of this. There are some details we need to figure out still, so I'm gonna read to you this document.
Instead of reading, let's let everyone have three minutes.
Oh, that's right, we just passed it out. Okay, that's fine with me.
For those who are confused, on the back side is, over on the right-hand column is the continuation of what's cut off at the end of stage four.
That's where I was gonna throw my Thanksgiving.
I don't know why.
So, one thing I just, I know people ask me not to read it, but there's been a lot of criticism about lack of transparency and I'm just wondering, for people watching on TV not knowing what we just read, is that not being transparent if I don't read?
It can be uploaded into board docs.
Okay, so then anyone who's watching, this will be posted and you can access it that way. So, so, stage one?
So, actually, let's, I think it would be wise to make a motion that this is going to be the superintendent search process and then we, and then we can discuss as we go along. So, you would make that motion?
All right, well, I'd like to make a motion that this proposed superintendent search process be adopted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Clemmon. Would you like to speak to it?
So, I'd like to speak to this, that there are many factors that we took into account. We tried to create a process that involves the advisory committee as much as possible along the way, but that also respects the board's responsibility to actually make the decision. So, as you can see, we have, we have the advisory committee involved in a variety of roles along the way, but that it is clear that ultimately, the board is the one choosing the candidates at each stage leading to the final selection. I don't want to say more right now, I'd rather answer questions if that's okay.
So, does, what we did earlier is we went stage by stage.
Yes.
Does this make sense to...
I would prefer to do it that way.
Say, let's...
If we could do stage one questions, stage two questions. Any questions about stage one? Any concerns, questions, ideas? Let me frame it that way.
Well, I have a question, I don't know what stage it belongs in.
So, we're gonna discuss stage one first.
So, do you have a question about stage one? I don't know what, where my question belongs.
What's your question, we can discuss.
What does SFI mean?
Oh.
SFI is success factor interviewing and what that, what that meet, what that, where that fits in is that position analysis, which is the process we're using to create the job description, is off, is used in conjunction with an application screening process and an interviewing process called success factor interviewing.
Can I give a real quick, this is the, this is the interviewing style philosophy that Bill Bryan from the Center for Secondary School Reform has, is...
It's a methodology.
It's a methodology.
Yeah, so...
I think, I think that, do you have further questions on it at this point? Okay. Any questions on stage one? Commissioner Porter?
Regarding the questions that will be pulled for the candidates? The, I know it says the, will be created collectively by the ad hoc committee with input from the larger board, the SAC and Ray Associates. I would think that these questions actually should be created at this point of the game. This, these questions should be created by the board with responsibility for the hiring. But this is for the twelve interviews. This isn't for the further and beyond that with the SAC.
Are we just doing questions, I'm sorry?
We're talking questions, questions are comments. Yeah, I did say concerns are ideas.
On stage one only, on the stage one part of this election. Go ahead, sir.
Just to respond to Mark's concern, the idea of forming the ad hoc committee was, it's very difficult to do these things by a large committee. So, the idea would be that board members' questions would be funneled to the ad hoc committee and would help put them together. It wouldn't preclude any kind of participation, you know, or contribution of the full board. But as I said, the ad hoc committee was created because it's pretty impossible to do this with a large committee.
Can I add on?
I'm sorry.
If, if a non-ad hoc committee member shows up and let's say he wants to help look through some of these resumes and weigh in, they can do that, right?
So far, our process has been that, and even the SAC, we've had board members show up at the SAC and just talk and I haven't told them they couldn't.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Anything further on stage one? Yes?
Well, also, Mark, one of the things, you know, we're paying Ray and Associates and they're real experts on this and this is sort of the initial interviews and I would like to get as much expertise from them too about interviews. So, I think we should all have a chance to put input, but I wouldn't want to not start with also including what the experts have to bring us, so I hope they'll give us a good start on this. start on this.
You know, that being said, I want to bring something up that I forgot to mention, which is that, that yesterday, they sent me a link to the survey results, and I meant to send it out to you all.
Okay.
And I haven't yet, so I can do that tonight or first thing tomorrow, so you can review that, because that's going to be a survey, I don't know how many.
This is for the profile.
Yeah, how many did it, but you'll get to see the results of that. And that those, for people watching, so they know what I'm talking about, there was a survey sent out to the board and the SAC, asking us to choose out of this larger list of criteria, like, was it top 10 or 11, I can't remember.
Ten.
Ten out of 30. And so, we were going to look at this to get just an idea of where the SAC and the board stand on what are the higher priority criteria we're looking for. So that being said, he, Gary Ray said he, that's the beginning of what helps him craft questions. So I'll send it to you all tomorrow, but I just wanted to put that out there, because when you're talking about him crafting questions.
All right, I'd like to move on to stage two here. Are there, and before we go on to stage two, I would like to reflect some of the discussion that took place earlier in the evening. With the ad hoc committee, in stage two, where there were, there was some discussion looking at line two, where it says SAC presents, it shouldn't say two, it just should say SAC presents, the pros and cons of each candidate to the ad hoc based on their discussion, and then in the very last sentence, after hearing the presentations of the SAC, the ad hoc narrows the candidate pool to four to six candidates. There was some discussion as to whether or not it made sense for the ad hoc to be the folks who are doing that, or it should be the full board. This is what we're bringing forward, we can have a discussion, questions, speak to it, make amendments to this, but this is the proposal that's coming forward. Commissioner Curry.
I support the ad hoc committee narrowing it, because they will have had input from the board and the SAC.
I agree.
Commissioner Porter.
Yeah, I disagree, I want to have a say in the matter on how that gets narrowed down. I want to be able to see the interviews, I want to be able to go through that process.
I'd have to agree with Mark as well.
Commissioner Truman.
Is there anything precluding our seeing that and providing input as opposed to being the deciders? I mean, I don't feel that I need to be.
I don't think so. No, I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
So, just trying to see if I'm understanding what you're saying, like, you know, to be able to take a look at it and weigh in as opposed to.
If I'm going to get hung a couple of years from now, and I, because I have ownership on something, I want to actually have participated in some of the calling, right? So, that's where I want to.
But that's not saying that, that's not the same as saying that the SAC makes the.
You mean the ad hoc.
The ad hoc does the cuts, you can still provide any input, any review, I mean, that makes sense to me to be able to do that.
Commissioner China.
Well, to respond to that, the way that we have been running ad hoc committee meetings is, anyone from the board can attend and participate, we, the ad hoc votes. If we followed that structure at this stage here, then potentially you could have the five of us who are on the ad hoc committee making the vote, but anyone could show up and take part in discussion. And hopefully, if we had a healthy discussion, it would lead to a consensus, and we would just all vote. But that, you know, that would be a way to include you. Thing is, is that enough? Do you feel like you actually have to be in the vote in the moment?
This is, this is a matter, I mean, we're, this is going, there are lots of remarks going through this right now on, on people being able to vote. It's a big thing to vote, even if they're not a citizen or a member of the community. In that sense, voting is the important piece, right? And if we agree with that, then the vote has to be the important piece on this.
So do you think we need to assemble the whole, the whole board, or is to make that decision? That's the question, or can?
Well, this is just Mark's view.
Mark's, Mark's view is, right, we get that. I would like to hear, that's clear, I'd like to hear from others as to whether they believe we should be ad hoc or the full board, and personally, I don't know that I really care that much. I don't think it makes that big of a difference, I think we're going to get almost the exact same people if we do it either way.
I guess I would only point on principle that if we follow Mark's logic, then I would say we shouldn't have an ad hoc. If I were you guys, I wouldn't want to put in the extra time and stuff. I thought it was an efficiency measure, that it was put together with some thought to the balance and that it's a proxy, so that this unwieldy 14, which we have, could move with some, some, you know, speed. But if we're going to do that, then, then the 14 should decide the whole thing. Because it's all decision, per Mark, you know, they're all decisions, they're going to hire this very important thing, and it's true, all of us are going to be on the hook for the decision. So if we follow that logic, we should just, which, I'm not saying we should do, I'm comfortable with ad hoc. Because I want some efficiency anywhere in this thing, we can get it.
And, and I would say that if we decide to go to the full board, that means everyone needs to be ready to give up another night's notice at, at, when we say, you know, with 48 hours advance notice. Commissioner Mattson.
I mean, I see the logic in how you built ad hoc, having decision, headache, having decision, and the board at the last two stages being responsible for the decision, I see the logic in that, and I think it fits in with this efficiency piece, why we created the group, as Kyle said, and, you know, having faith in that group. I see no reason that I can't give as much input as I want, and I've seen, and I think I have a conference of board members who would take that into consideration if there were a candidate or two who I really wanted to see there, and, you know, or a couple of people did. So I'm comfortable with the way you're laying this out right now, I see the logic.
Any further questions or comments on stage two? Seeing none, I'll move on to stage three, and I will also would like to represent some of the conversation from earlier in the evening with the, the ad hoc committee discussion. There was a discussion as to whether or not the interview itself, the interviews, this would be four to six people, the interviewed via Skype. One of the suggestions, in order to keep the SAC involved and engaged in a, in a seemingly meaningful in way, would be that they would be the ones who would actually conduct the interviews, they would have their set of questions, and there would be some group of the SAC who would actually be asking those questions of the candidates, with the expectation that the rest of the board would be present observing. The other was, some people felt, no, that's inappropriate, it should be the board asking the questions at that point. And I just wanted to reflect those two different ideas that were, that were brought forward. And Commissioner Segreeno.
There was a third idea, and that is that the SAC interview the candidates via Skype, and let the board interview them, so that everybody has, you know, sort of a direct contact.
Or we could do some hybrid, where we have members of the SAC and members of the board together doing one interview. So there's different ways we could approach that.
Yeah, Commissioner Clemens?
It's my understanding that the questions would be developed by both the board and the SAC and the ad hoc committee.
And the search.
And it would be the same, and, I'm sorry.
And the search firm.
And the search firm. And it would be the same questions regardless of who asks them.
Yes, and you can't deviate.
That is, that's the proposal.
So I guess what I, what I would be looking for here is some guidance around people's opinions or sentiment around how do we resolve the piece of how the interview plays out.
Commissioner Stone.
So, just sort of an idea, building off of Mark's thing about getting as inclusive a group as we can without all 14 of us, what if we took a group of us who weren't the superintendent, advisor, ad hoc committee, and we had that group of board members do it? So it would be four or five other board members than those of us that are on the ad hoc. And then the SAC looks at it and we look at it together. So in a sense, it's a way of bringing more board members into the process.
Commissioner Clemens?
Something that came up earlier too was the, the need to make sure that the SAC is involved as a community process and not, and to include them as much as possible so that we don't run into this, you know, kind of, here you are, this is what you're doing, and now we're going to ignore you factor, so just to keep that in mind.
Does anyone have any feedback on my idea?
Was your, just to clarify, was your idea that?
Four or five people who are not members of the ad hoc committee would actually just be asking the question.
Do the interviewing.
But SAC and the rest of the board would be observing?
Yeah.
That, I just, that's what I was trying to plug in.
Commissioner Curry.
I guess my overall bent is that, starting with, the board is responsible for hiring and hiring superintendent, that is our first and foremost job in being. And flowing from that, we delegate responsibilities to committees for reasons of efficiency and functioning well. So we've done that, we have an ad hoc committee, I would favor the ad hoc committee doing interviews, we have created a public process for inclusion and involvement, and we've been, I think, very generous, and from what I can see, what Brian's doing, I think, bending over backwards to be inclusive and consider community viewpoints, and so my inclination is a more conservative approach, that it's our job, and we delegate it to the committee, and the committee should do the interviews.
The ad hoc committee should do the interviews.
Yes.
Are you okay with the SAC observing the interviews?
Of course, I mean, it's a public, yeah.
Well, it's not public, it's not public at this point.
But they've signed a confidentiality agreement, and they've already seen.
And they know we are.
People, and they know who they are, and so I think the confidentiality piece is problematic to begin with, but given that they've already been involved in 10 to 12 of them, then, you know, narrowing it down is only a good thing.
So are you making a friendly motion amendment that says, stage two are invited to interview conducted by the ad hoc committee?
If you need one, yes.
Well, we'd need to change the, the proposal.
Sorry.
No, it's all right. Be right here, SAC would be changed for ad hoc committee. And remember, this is just the people who are asking the questions, that's, that's all we're debating.
Right, right, conducted by the ad hoc committee, yes.
Would you, Commissioner China, would you find that, that friendly?
Other people don't want to do that, I don't really care.
I'm open to it, I'm curious about the sentiment of the group, can I ask that?
Well, it needs a second.
You know, I'll accept it.
Can we, can we make sure we're focused on this conversation, guys? Commissioner Shamsky, Commissioner Porter, can, there's a question that was just asked of the group, and we'd like everyone's input on that.
I especially want to hear what David has to say.
It, it needs a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I accepted it.
He accepted it as friendly, who, who, Commissioner Segreeno, would you accept that as friendly?
Okay.
That was, that was the same argument I made earlier tonight.
It's the exact same argument I made earlier tonight, so I'm okay with it.
And that's what I wanted to hear, so. So he suggested, you suggested earlier.
Sorry.
No, no, before, no, in our previous meeting, yeah, yeah, so you're bringing back his point, that's what he's trying to say.
Okay.
Okay. Any further comment on stage three?
Post-traumatic.
Yes, Commissioner Shamsky.
This brings up a good point, where she's talking about the meeting is open, it's not open, it's, you know, it's privileged, is that Brian earlier said, right now, he allows board members to come and talk, and I just want to understand, this is stage three and everything else, is that, I don't want to get into a gray area, is that, I'd like it clarified, is that in all these stages, do, board members may not have a vote on the SAC who are not Cat or Kyle, but do board members have a right to be in every executive session, at every meeting, and to speak? Is that, is that, can we stay, okay, so for the record, on the record here, board members can be involved in every process of the SAC, but they cannot vote until the final.
I, I, the only, I'm not, I'm not hesitating, because like, agreement or disagreement, I'm just not sure from executive session, I would assume that that, because some of this stuff is going to have to be closed doors, right? Because of, the names are going to be out there.
Right.
I don't, no, because the, yes, that's fine, because the board members will have already seen all of the applications anyway. The full board would have seen all the applications, have access to the applications anyway, so.
Okay, thank you.
My, I mean, the, I'm sorry, my, we think about the confidentiality clause that all the SAC committee people have had to sign, nobody in this room is.
Yes, you do.
We will all be signing that before we look at anything.
And by taking your oath.
Okay, I mean, I just want to make.
That is true, but I think we should have signed, we should.
We can, but I'm just saying, but, all right, I want to move forward here. Any other comments on stage three? Yes, Commissioner Truman.
It says, I mentioned this to, to Brian, whenever, to the extent possible, my preference is three finalists, not two to three, because I've seen situations where you have two finalists, one drops out for some reason, and you, by default, you've got your nominee, so I would say.
I accept that. I accept saying three.
Thank you, and Scott, thank you for your early point, that was important, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Do we need a vote on this motion?
Stage four.
Do you, you know, do you accept it that is friendly?
Yeah.
Okay, so moving on to stage four, we have a, 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 a variety of different community and school and teacher, student SAC interviews and events. Each group's going to create their own set of questions with some sort of guidance. They will, we will create a mechanism, which is yet to be determined, but we'll create a mechanism where people who participate in those events would be able to give feedback for board consideration, and then the board would reach their final decision. Are there any comments about the, the process there?
I mean, I had something about it, which is, I just didn't know if it was necessary for the SAC and the board to be conducting two separate interviews, since everything we've done up to this point is together, and do we really want to make a candidate go through two? I'm not opposed to it, but it was a question I had.
Commissioner Segreeno.
Can, I think we should just stick to the decision-making process, I think some of these finer details can be worked out later, but it's 10:30, and I think we're running out of steam, and what we really want to do is to get who's making decisions along the way. That's, that's, that's my thought about this, Brian.
I hear you, but I think the SAC's going to want to know for me that piece, like, what's their involvement in the final step, because that's really important, so I just, out of respect, when I want to give them clarity around their role.
Can I suggest that we figure out if we approve this, and then we offer some, some detail to you, but it doesn't need to be part of this particular proposal? Because it should be left flexible, quite frankly. I think some of this, to the extent you can leave it flexible, is important, but right now, we just want to understand who's involved and what part of the decision-making process.
Other comments on stage four? Like, it's like, someone's dying here.
You. Just following up on what Stephanie said, I mean, once the document is in, it's in, so maybe we should add a language there before the four different things that says something like, the sessions which the candidate will be expected to attend are, you know, I don't know, are to include, you know, five sessions that could be, or something, just to make sure. Because if I read this, I would thought, I would say, okay, we've decided it's two different things, I just wondered if we should put a little clause in there.
All stages and information subject to change.
Yeah, something, no, I mean, just, just so that the SAC understands they're going to be involved in some way, but if it didn't, if it says here it's going to be a SAC interview, then, you know, a large amount might think it was going to be an interview, so.
I, I personally don't see, yeah, I actually think the SAC interview makes, makes sense, and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be contradictory to a hiring process for a job of this, for somebody to expect to go through five different sessions like this, and the SAC seems to be a logical one. So I would actually suggest that it stay as it is with the SAC interview there, but, but I'm, if you'd like to make a friendly amendment to change the language, will be expected to attend our, to whatever, to include five sessions, which could include a community interview.
Yes, I would prefer to have that there. If that's friendly.
Commissioner China, would you accept that as friendly?
Can you say it again? I was reading something when you said, I'm sorry.
The session was the candidates will be expected to attend, include our, our five sessions, or should I, should say, there are five sessions which the candidates would, will be expected to attend, which could include.
Yes.
Which may include.
Thank you.
And then as soon as we finalize that, we can.
So we could always, we could always edit it later if we have to, yeah.
Yes. You accept that as friendly?
I will.
Commissioner Segreeno? Okay. Any other comments on stage four? Hearing no further discussion, I would like to, there are some questions to consider, those are really more for, at this point, for the ad hoc committee, so I, that's, those aren't part of the, the motion. I would like to have a vote for all those in favor of the proposed superintendent's search process, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
One against. We have a superintendent's search process, thank you. Moving on to the, anything further, Commissioner China?
Not tonight.
All right, moving on to the diversity and equity committee report.
No, I don't, we, the, let me just say one thing, I don't want to keep us any later than we have to. The administration, in particular, Nikki Fuller brought a three-year plan, diversity strategic plan, a draft to our committee, and we, I think it was, was very well received, and they're going to be just fine-tuning some of it and bringing it back next month.
You received my email earlier today?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Curriculum committee, Commissioner Dotson?
Those are the documents that we go on to board docs and see those.
Yes, yeah, it's up there, yeah.
So it's up there.
Commissioner Dotson?
Yes, so there were several things discussed, one was, in public comment, a community member came and wanted to discuss the issue of waiting classes at the, awaited rank at the high school, and saying that some students take more rigorous classes than others, which may cause it to be more challenging, and that what can happen is a student who takes a lower. that what can happen is a student who takes a lower, a lesser rigorous course, these are all in the commenter's words, could get a higher grade and therefore appear to be presenting themselves more college-ready than someone who took more rigorous courses and got a lesser grade. And so we talked about that, and where it was left was for a follow-up with Principal Mellon Camp with this community member about that issue. So I'm not sure exactly where we are on those meetings. I don't know, Scott, do you know what, or has anybody else heard where we are? So that's one pending thing. Big one that Superintendent Phillips is leading us through is, we have spoke to you all about Fanta-Spinell, which is one of the primary reading level assessments that we use, and we are particularly interested, well, the goal has been set for committee is third grade reading proficiency by third grade, that the marker within that assessment for proficiency in the third grade, we ultimately want to make sure that all Burlington students actually meet that by third grade. And so that's one goal, and within that, we're particularly interested in looking at summer learning loss. So we assess students at the end of the year, and it is a national phenomenon that students, particularly those who perhaps don't have the same out-of-school supports for their literacy, often lose some of what was gained during the year. So they come back lower in the reading level than they left. And so we were going to rely on testing in the fall, which is, it's very time-consuming, and we should be nearing that, Stephanie, or near that. So in our next committee meeting, we'll be looking at data that tells us what actually occurred with students as it relates to year-end last spring and what happened this fall. So that's another one. And then Stephanie reported out on a tool that is being used, it's called Teach Point, and it's an electronic tool, and basically it supports building-level principals who are the evaluator, the evaluator of teachers in doing learning walks. It's a protocol that aligns things so there can be consistency across buildings, and there's information about those learning walks that can then, through electronic means, be communicated, Stephanie, so that she can supervise and support that work. And this is all about raising the bar to make sure that we're having more constant conversation with teachers around their classroom practice, around the goals we're setting for students, and that there's some support and accountability about how we're moving, how we're moving forward with regards to that.
Thank you, Commissioner Dotson.
Is that being implemented this year?
Yes.
Any other questions for Commissioner Dotson? Hearing none. Commissioner Stoll?
So we have a motion, and I would just start by making my motion. To get to the actual motion, you have to click on the thing on the sidebar, because the thing in the agenda is just a summary, and then the actual words of the motion pop up, so people have it in front of them. It's basically a motion to retain a human resources consultant to study, evaluate, and report on positions within the Burlington School District Finance Department. So this was passed by the finance committee. It's a recommendation made by Ed Gomo, and he made a very compelling argument for it at the finance committee, I think. He talked about how, you know, this is, regardless of who the finance director is, or when the new finance director comes in, or when he doesn't come in, or what his background is, we still need to look at our finance department and do a really good evaluation of it to determine what we need. And that need will be there regardless of who the specific personnel are. The other argument that I feel, this is a good time to do this, is I think about our new finance director, Nate, coming in. He's got a lot to learn. He's got a lot to step into. He's got to figure out a lot of things, and I think it would be very valuable for him to basically start by having a really good evaluation of what the needs are going forward. So I hope people will agree.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Oh, yeah, I need a second. Oh, sorry, I shouldn't have talked till I got a second. Okay. So.
Either one.
Commissioner Porter, second.
Sorry, so I talked to it.
If, you've already spoken to it. If I may, I'd like to have Superintendent Phillips, she had a suggestion that she wanted to bring into the discussion to actually extend this motion, so.
So since this idea came forward at finance, in doing a little bit of work and looking at some structures here, I would like to suggest that the board consider including the Human Resources Department in this motion to have this analysis work done. In looking at our processes between those two departments, they're very closely linked, so when you look at anything from contracts and payroll to tuition reimbursement, there are a lot of pieces of work that both departments are doing that are related and are interconnected. So if the board is going to go forward and hire a consultant to look at the business office, I think it would be well worth the time to also have them look at the Human Resources Department, so that we could look at the staffing, we could look at the efficiencies, and we could look at the overall work of the two departments since they're so closely connected.
Commissioner Stoll?
Are you suggesting as an amendment to...
That, I mean, that, we could bring that up as an amendment?
I haven't had time to think about it, it's the first time hearing about it, so I feel uncomfortable making a friendly amendment to this motion. It might be exactly the right thing to do, but I guess I would, I would want to get Ed Gomo's cut on it, because I wouldn't want to water this down, like, I want this, this should happen, and it should happen quickly, and is it the same consultant one would hire to look at the finance department as one would hire to look at the Human Resources? It might be, but I don't know that. So I'm not trying to be difficult here by not simply jumping on it, I just feel like I have, just had, heard it one minute ago, so I need to think a minute.
Commissioner Porter?
No, mine, discussion for another time.
Commissioner Truman?
It's a question for Miriam, I guess, the finance committee, with the committee and the board comfortable with doing something, some kind of language change to this, that we would pass this and authorize the finance committee on, you know, you want to have these conversations, to expand the scope to Human Resources, basically delegating that decision to the committee. Is that an appropriate action, in that sense, of the board?
Commissioner Porter?
I'm actually, within partially, I don't want to dilute this, but I would be in favor of us discussing whatever committee would go through for the non-classroom teacher staffing sizing. What do you want to call it? The administrative staff, like, across the board?
So, so let's...
I was just, away from this one.
Yeah, so let's focus on this particular discussion, because I think that Superintendent Collins, Superintendent Phillips...
I was with you, Ben. I was with you on that.
Superintendent Phillips had a specific reason for bringing the Human Resources Department in because of the close nature of their work with the finance department. I think that what you're talking about may be a worthwhile discussion, but I don't think that...
We can table it, we can talk about it.
But I don't think that that's, that was the reasoning behind what we have here. Commissioner Dotson?
So I like, from your point, I guess I would support pursuing it with in mind a, to make sure that it doesn't dilute, but given the significant transition that's taken place and the vital nature of the work, understanding better where we stand is pretty critical. Yeah, there's, I mean, it's, yes.
So expanding the scope, there's no harm done in having more info, I guess.
That's right.
So is that a friendly amendment to expand the scope for the finance committee to discuss that?
Well, I'm trying to figure out how to, you know, we can move forward on this, because I agree that it's a timetable that we would want to move along on, so I don't know what the language would be at this point.
Well, so how about authorize the finance committee to expand the scope of the study? Should that, should there be indications that that would be a worthwhile thing to do?
I mean, I would be, yeah, I think that's fine. I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Commissioner Porter?
Yeah, I see, when we originally talked about this, this came, this is actually tables from last month, right? So we brought it up, and we tabled it, it was one of the four motions that we decided not to put on.
I can't keep them straight.
Yeah. So this was really just to help, to key in on the finance side of things, and to help the new finance director.
This actually wasn't one of the table. This was, this was a motion from the last finance committee meeting.
But this was very specifically to help the new finance director.
Right.
As he came in, to make sure that he didn't go too long, not enough staff.
Right. And the question, though, is, would you accept what Ben's, to, for the finance committee to authorize the finance committee to expand the motion if they deem appropriate to include the Human Resources Department?
Could we have a second motion?
We could. A friendly amendment has been made and accepted.
Accepted, it's not my call.
It is. You're the second on it, so you have to accept it as well.
No, the, Miriam, what are you, I'm...
It's your call.
Yeah, I can go ahead and defer my...
You can't. You made the second, this is your response. I want to go home.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to harm anything by...
Can I make a suggestion? So, Don, I don't know what the friendly amendment may be. All right. At the end of the first sentence, finance department, period. At its discretion, the finance committee may expand the scope of the study to include the Department of Human Resources.
Any further discussion to this, to this motion?
Budgetary implications and within current budget, you know, in terms of expenditure to do this.
I think that that's implicit, but it's, we didn't write it in here, we didn't really talk about the cost. But actually, Ed did give us a suggestion. I can't remember what he said, but a couple thousand dollars or something. He wasn't talking a huge amount, so.
Should we put a limit on it? Any further discussion to the amendment, to the motion? All in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, sorry, anything further from finance?
I just wanted to just say that at our next finance committee meeting, Ed Gomo is going to be doing a presentation to sort of summarize the work he's done. It's at seven o'clock on the fourth Tuesday of the month. So he's going to be doing a presentation, summarize the work he's done, and what he thinks the next steps are going forward, so I'd really encourage everyone to come who would like to.
Seven o'clock, the fourth Tuesday.
Yes, and I'll put him at the top of the agenda.
Thank you.
All right, policy and governance, Commissioner Truman?
I'm going to be very quick, and then I'm going to leave. I apologize, I said, no, it's not because of my bedtime, it's because my wife travels, and I promised my son I wouldn't leave him alone for the entire night. So, that's, it's all right, him and his friend, the TV are doing fine. I'm going to, basically what I was going to say is, I am going to send out something to the board. Part of the intent tonight was to bring to the board a plan for our plan to address evaluation of the interim superintendent, the details of which you can see in minutes of our last policy meeting. I have been having back and forth calls and call attempts with the School Board Association to get some guidance based on what their experience on these may have been, and I want to nail that down before I come up with a recommendation for us to continue, to consider. But in short, it's, and again, I'll refer you to the minutes, it's a conversation and asking for some, you know, to some extent, self-evaluation from the interim superintendent based on the board goals and categorizing that way that we came up with at the retreat, as well as developing a tool, probably a survey or whatever, for the board to provide input and ask questions of the interim superintendent as well. And the bottom line on this is because the very specific policy we have on evaluation does not apply to this kind of a situation. And I really want to get some guidance from the SBA, because I know they likely have experience with this. But I think we're kind of close to figuring out a good way to do this, and then the board will, the committee will be focusing on taking a good look at the superintendent evaluation process, so we have something in place that the board wants to have moving forward for the new superintendent. I'm going to ask, sort of related to that, because some other ideas and thinkings about, that spill over a little bit into the policy for the committee structures that we had to clarify the responsibilities of policy committee, are a little overlap with that conversation, so I'd like to be able to postpone action on that till next month. I don't know if I need to table it or just...
For the second reading?
Yeah, second reading of B.C., just to postpone action on that for one month. Okay. And that's the quick sum of my report.
All right. Commissioner Shamsky?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Ben, for bringing up the interim superintendent evaluation. I've been looking for that, and I know it takes work, so I appreciate you staying on that, because that's something that I'm not happy with, what happened with our last superintendent, and I'd like to make it a full process this time, so thank you very much.
Thanks very much. It's going to be, and it's the whole committee, the three of us, recognizing the fact that we can't do the evaluation just simply because it doesn't work, but that there's a need for something, so, thanks, Seth.
All right, I would entertain a motion from our executive session for acceptance of the, for the acceptance of the office personnel contract.
I believe that we accept the office personnel contract.
Seconded by Commissioner Curry. All in favor of accepting the office personnel contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let's have hands, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 in favor, opposed, three opposed. All right, the motion passes. I will also entertain happily a motion to adjourn. Commissioner China, seconded by Commissioner Stoll, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?